Oh Heavenly Father, we come to you in prayer thanking you, Lord, for this wonderful day that thou hast given us, Father. At this time, we ask that you will guide us, Lord, in this board meeting, Father. Let us be able to make the right decisions, decisions for our students, Lord, and our staff and the whole district of Progreso ISD. Give us wisdom and let us carry out what you want us to carry out and let it be your will. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
At this time, we go to item A3, which is public audience.
Good afternoon. I would like to say thank you to everybody for the community of soccer. Me as a soccer dad, I would like to appreciate your support and dream come true. For my kid to be here still and wanting to play after all, going through all the emotional crisis. And just simply being appreciative of everybody here, everybody. Want to say a big old thank you. Like to say, continue to support. Without you guys, it would be possible. That would be my deepest, 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 biggest way to say thank you would be that way. Thank you to all.
Williamus. Juan Carlos Macías. Juan Carlos Macías. Marta Casares.
Las cosas como se dice, las cosas se dicen en vida. Este, yo trabajé para el distrito 25 años, en las cuales la mayoría de los años fueron unos verdugos conmigo. Comenzando con la señora... La escuela, los chiquitos y este... Ella mandaba reportes a la oficina central y este Coronado se encargaba de suspenderme. Sin preguntarme las causas, nomás. Era su... Approchándose de su poder, de su puesto, me suspendía. La última suspensión fue porque este según Suñiga, escuchó que yo había mencionado que eran unos corruptos. Y esa fue... Él me mandó llamar a la oficina, no me preguntó cuál le vieran siendo las causas, nomás me dijo está suspendida. Y aquí está Miss Valdés, que no me hace no mentir. Cuando me salí de la escuela, este, me retiré. Este, pedí mi expediente. En todos los expedientes, tardaron tres meses para entregarme el expediente y no ven, en ninguna de ellas venían las suspensiones. Este, y pienso que no deben de aprovecharse de su poder para marginar mis... Mis Suñiga, mis Pia Nueva fueron las primeras que comenzaron, buscaban cualquier pretexto. En mis, en mis papeles de trabajo nunca les di gusto. Todo el tiempo allá van motivos que me plantaban en las aulas para echarme la culpa. Y acusando maestras que ellas les daban el reporte. Yo iba y le preguntaba a la maestra, me decía, no, yo vamos, yo hablo. Yo hablo a tu favor, que yo no dije nada. Yo no la quería meter en problemas, solo dejaba así. Este... Tuve dos caídas en la escuela. En dos diferentes ocasiones. La primera, fui a con la enfermera que estaba encargada del distrito, Miss Alemán. Y ella, en lugar de preguntar, de darme una hoja para un reporte que le llevara a Esmer, me dijo, hay cámaras donde quiera. Esa fue su respuesta. Se lo comunica a Miss Suñiga, no me hizo caso, así se quedó. La segunda, me caí limpiando ventanas fuera de la escuela. Y fueron en el summer, este, mis perales le comunican a Miss Suñiga. Y ella no me mandó reporte a las oficinas, que porque andaba en el área, aunque era el área del distrito, que no andaba el área asignada por ella. Eso se lo puedo confirmar Miss Galván, porque tuve que ir al hospital con dolor de un brazo. Para que el hospital les comunique que me había caído dos veces en el trabajo y que no me habían hecho caso. Y de ahí me mandaron a, a Ponetmar a que levantara el reporte. Ahí enfrente de mí, y Sezmer le habla a Miss Suñiga y le comunica lo sucedido y Miss Suñiga dice, es que no, no hay este... No hay, ella andaba haciendo, en un área que no estaba asignada, le dijo a Miss Galván, miss, aquí tengo reportes donde las trabajadoras han bajándose el carro porque están en el parqueadero de distrito. Que han dañado el pie o X y el aseguro les cubre. Ahora con más ganas esta. Y va a necesitar operación y no lo hice, no lo hice porque era muy, era muy peligrosa la operación y no lo hice. Pero tuve que pasar por todo eso y no tengo nada bueno que hablar de todos los que trabajan aquí. Entonces, este, porque todos se dirigen a uno con otro. A mí me quebraron vidrios del carro en la escuela. Me hicieron a lo que no. Todo lo que pudieron, el daño que pudieron hacer, no me lo hacían a mí personalmente, pero no me lo hacían a cosas materiales que se podían reparar. Pero me daba cuenta que eran de, de los mismos de la, trabajadores de la escuela que eran mandados por sus mayores. A otra, cambiando de tema.
Gabriel Acosta.
Good evening, everybody. I come here today urging the community and you, Mr. Agapito, Ms. Carmen, Ms. Bernice, Ms. Yadira, Ms. Paola, and Ms. Janie. To formally remove Mr. Ramos as president and member of this board. His recent actions with law enforcement are not a reflection of what Progreso ISD stands for. It is a disgrace that once again, we are making headlines, that we are the laughing stock of the valley. This is unacceptable behavior that should be reprimanded with appropriate consequences. You are a public figure who is representing the school and the community at all times. Therefore, there is no such thing as whatever he does during his personal time is not our concern. It is our concern, Mr. Ramos. Don't concern citizens contact you at all hours? What if someone would have contacted you that evening or the following morning? How can you ensure that you were going to be in a good mental health state to answer? I ask you, is this the individual you want at the forefront making decisions for our schools, for our children? Because I know I don't. As an educator myself, I must adhere to the educator's code of ethics. And I strongly believe that anyone in representation of our school, students, faculty, and staff should abide by it too. As an educator, we advocate for drug-free zones. How can we do that, Mr. Ramos, when you want to continue at the forefront? As an educator, we try to instill a sense of responsibility in our students. How can we do that when you, Mr. Ramos, want to continue at the forefront? As an educator, we teach our students that bad choices come with consequences. How can we do that when you, Mr. Ramos, want to continue at the forefront? So how can we ask students to take these messages seriously? When you, Mr. Ramos, a person who is supposed to lead by example, was arrested for DUI, harassment, and possession of drugs? So I highly encourage you, Mr. Ramos, to have the courage and lead by example. To step down and take responsibility for your actions. Thank you.
Put in Alex. Mr. Camarero.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the board. I just wanted to thank you all for the graduation that you all orchestrated for the 2025 graduating class. Excellent job, all around. Applause. I really don't want to keep on that same topic that this young lady expressed. My other concern was that hearing from UYL that I unfortunately had the opportunity to listen to. That next time that we as professionals have a little bit more data available for questioning. At the level of those gentlemen that took their time to listen to our discussion. Another thing, there was this parent that was talking about the kids or band. That they were in desperate need of attire. And since I heard on the last meeting that I was present, that principals were asking for desk, right? Maybe you could see it in an order of looking more into what the kids' needs are and, you know, maybe put that up. Desk for the principals on a standstill and figure out what the concern of the parents are concerning their kids' attire for band. I really don't have too much to say, but we all are grown adults and we should do our best to facilitate our needs for our kids. It's the most important thing as role models, as superintendent and whatnot. Please, as a concerned citizen, please, let's put all this behind us and let's do the right thing. And go on as we always do, come in here and talk about our kids' needs instead of, you know, things that are not supposed to be spoken in school board meetings. Thank you.
Amelie Castillo. Who? Ms. Castillo.
Good afternoon. My name is Evelyn Castillo. I am six years old and I am a former student of this school district. I come here today as a student and a voice of representation to speak about the truth and those children and people that have been silenced and ignored. When I was in elementary, I was a victim of bullying, but thanks to God, the situation was resolved. Additionally, after the pandemic, I was suffering with anxiety, isolation, and fear, just like many other students were. On my first day back to the Dorothy Thompson Middle School, I had hoped that things would be better. But unfortunately, I went through a negative situation once again. My parents questioned, but they were ignored. We had to make the decision to move schools even though I didn't want to. My dream of graduating with a red gown as a red ann in my own community were shattered. But I had to leave because I was not given an option. As of today, I am in the top 10 at my current school and have received Student of the Year. I'm not saying this to show off, but to show that with great teachers, mentors, and leaders, you can have an opportunity to achieve great things. And that's why I'm here today, to speak about leadership and about the situation that is going on. Have many of you forgotten what every student is taught each year about say no to drugs? We even have a week dedicated to the awareness of alcohol and drug consumption called the Red Ribbon Week. So it does not make any sense that one of our most notable leaders has done the opposite. Although some people say that it was a personal matter, how can you see it as personal when that person represents all students and campuses during events and meetings? Where is the example? Where is the integrity? A real leader does not ignore the responsibilities and duties outside of office. A real leader keeps himself accountable in every situation. What is the message that you want to convey? Is it not to consume drugs inside of school or is it not to consume at all? Either way, this message is unnecessary if you keep justifying and silencing everything. I left the school district not because I wanted to, but because there was no protection. And to this day, not a lot of things have changed. And to Ms. Paola Candanoza, I want to tell you something with all respect. Maybe you don't remember me, but I want to let you know that you were in a difficult chapter of my life and I haven't forgotten it. That's why I want to remind you that you are sitting at this table to make the right choice. And to the Board of Directors, your duty is not to protect positions, it is to protect the students and their education. If you keep tolerating this kind of behavior, you are not helping this community. We recognize and appreciate the things that have been done. With all due respect, I want to remind you that actions have consequences. This is not an attack. This is the truth. We, the youth community, see and understand and it does affect us what you do represents you. And if you cannot comprehend that, then this position is not for you. May God bless all of you and may your decisions be guided by the truth. Thank you.
Who's next? Ms. Peña. Alicia.
Good evening, board. Good evening, citizens of Progreso Texas. First of all, I want to thank God for giving us another day of life, each and every one of us. We all made mistakes, which is okay, and we learn from them, but I'm not here to talk about mistakes right now. I'm here to talk about soccer. Big applause to soccer. Okay, back in November 1st, 2023, at 3:53, I received a very disturbing message from an individual. Hello, ma'am, FYI, we don't know each other, but I heard you care of our community from Progreso, especially the kids. A high school coach, Jerry, is doing some shady stuff and has to be stopped. The UYL finds out and punishes the whole soccer team. He has recruited some kids from Mexico to make the team stronger. And that means he won't let seniors play due to the fact that he got coaches and players from other cities. He even put a house in, am I going to say the street? For them to live. If we want to do anything about that, maybe y'all can make a stop before it happens and hopefully they play fair. This happened in November 1st, 2023. Where are we? We are in 2025 and I am furious. Everybody knows I love soccer. And I brought this to light to some board members and some personnel from the school district. And the reason I'm here is because Progreso has never needed help from nobody. We have kids here in Progreso that play soccer. Believe me, we have kids. We coach them. We don't need kids from Mexico. We don't, nowhere, just here. Let them play. And that parent soccer, I don't know where you are, I feel you, okay? So we don't need kids from outside. We had Coach Jimenez. I don't know what happened. He was a great coach. We never had problems with UYL or anything like that of sort. So soccer is very strong for me, so... We should do something about that coach. We don't need that coach. We have good people here that are able to coach soccer in our district. Before my time's up, also, I want to know what the follow-up on the mariachis is, because I always forget about the mariachis and the dance team. And I don't know what else did I put there? The dancing, the mariachi, the soccer, and I want to thank Ms. Armento, Mr. Agapito Pérez, Mr. Jay Ramos, Ms. Bernice, Ms. Acosta, for helping out that family, that the plate sale and other donations that they did. Very much appreciated. That shows the family that our school board does care, of course they care, right, for our children. And I hope I'm not forgetting anything, but other than that, I'm here to focus on soccer. Whatever Mr. Ramos did, you guys can take care of that and I put it in your hands and God's hands. He's the one that judges. We all make mistakes. I make mistakes. I'm not perfect. None of you is perfect either. None of the school board members are perfect. Just remember that. Nobody's perfect. We, my always says, my son says, always learn from your mistakes. So that's what we're going to do. We're going to learn from our mistakes and go forward. And I leave it at that. In the name of Jesus Christ, our soccer players are doing great right now. Thank you.
Amelio Barrios. Ms. Macías.
Buenas tardes, Carlos Macías. Yo soy culpable de tres jóvenes de la high school. Bueno, me quedan dos. Uno acaba de graduar. Gracias a eso, conocí un poquito más a la persona de Mr. Ramos. No sé si supieron, mi hijo, jugador de soccer, tuvo un problemita al final de temporada. Pocas personas estuvieron ahí para verlo. Consigui una beca de la cual muchos no se enteraron. Bueno, consigue varias. Que le están hablando por el soccer precisamente y a referencia a lo que comentaban ahorita es de los niños que llegaron nuevos y todo. Este, yo siento que cualquier niño tiene el derecho de venir a estudiar y jugar lo que le plazca o lo que quiera. Si el niño es bueno o no es bueno, lo consideran o no lo consideran, creo que es una utilización o derecho del coach o de los coaches. Sí, en este caso me dicen que el niño mío es bueno, bueno, le vamos a creer, no? Este, pero a raíz de la beca que les comentaba que conozco a Mr. Ramos en lo que nos ayudó mucho, desde que el niño lo ofrecen para tres universidades. Sí, una división uno, división tres, que son dos universidades y división uno. Quiere decir que hicieron algo bien, pero a mí me llama la atención es del poco apoyo que hay administrativo para que los niños sobresalgan un poquito más. No hablo del mío en especial, hablo de todos en general, porque veo que gradúan muchos y la universidad van 15, 20. Algo nos falta como sociedad y si queremos hacer algo, empecemos por unidad. No por hablar mal de los demás o echarnos unos a los otros. Yo siento que eso en lugar de ir para adelante como escuela o como municipio o como ciudad, como lo quieras ver, nos da para atrás. Eso no está correcto. No habla de una buena educación desde casa. Entonces, el apoyo es lo que necesitamos así. Y si personas como el señor Mr. Ramos es de las primeras en ayudar sin importar quién seas, les digo, que diferente porque no lo conocía personalmente. Y le agradezco una vez más lo que hizo aquella vez por nosotros. Entonces, yo siento que desde ahí estamos mal. Al atacar cualquier persona, cualquiera se va a equivocar. Si hablamos de errores, si hablamos de equivocaciones, siento que tenemos muchas, muchas, todos, todos incluidos, todos. La falta de apoyo, ¿por qué hablo del deporte en general? Porque son las actividades en las que acompañan a mis hijos, en las que pueden oportunidad de ir en las tardes por mi trabajo. Sí, es donde me ha tocado ver la gente que está, donde... Y mal no recuerdo, han estado dos o tres gentes exagerando. A muchos nunca los tocó ver, desafortunadamente. No sé si quisieron estar, yo no, pero no estuvieron. El señor fue de los pocos que estuvo con nosotros acompañándolos igual que los coaches. Que no me dejarán mentir las otras gentes que estaban ahí con nosotros. Entonces, eran muy, muy pocas. Cuando los niños les fue mal, el último juego, desafortunadamente, en San Antonio, pocas fueron las personas que estuvieron ahí para ellos. Como papás, a lo mejor van, sí, sí, estuvieron todos los papás, sí, porque fuimos muchos, éramos el apoyo general. Pero de parte de ustedes como sociedad o como administrativo, so board member que le llaman, que están según para ellos, no los vi. Redes sociales, hubo miles, Facebook, Twitter, todo lo que estaban compartiendo, sí, muchos, pero personalmente, que es lo que cuenta para ellos y quienes estuvieron con ellos fueron muy, muy pocos. Yo sí quisiera terminar con algo de que no juzguemos algo o si se equivocó en algo personal. Yo siento que eso nos pasa a todos, a todos. Levante la mano alguien que no se ha equivocado. Nadie, ¿verdad? Pero eso es muy independiente. Su trabajo, yo siento que nos respalda, el trabajo que hacemos nos respalda y si es ayudar mucho mejor. Gracias.
Anybody else? Alright ladies and gentlemen, at this time, I want to thank everybody for coming this evening. I know social media has gone blasting for the past week. As per my attorney, I will not be speaking on my case, but I do want to, from the bottom of my heart, I want to apologize to Progreso ISD, to the city of Progreso, to the students, to the staff. I also want to say so much sorry that my sisters here, to my family, that I left them down. It hasn't been an easy week for them, for us. I see social media, the support, some slander in my name. It's hurt, but I'm going to learn from my lessons, I'm going to move forward. Dust it off, work together with my colleagues to do better for Progreso ISD. The big question that I bet everybody has today is, what's next? My term finishes in 10 months. The way people put me in this position, I will respect when the people vote me up, but I'm going to let the concerned citizens do that. I'm going to do my best for the next 10 months. My term is over in May 2026. Anybody's welcome to sign up. But ladies and gentlemen, it's, it's, I don't want you guys, for one mistake that I do, this is not going to define me. I am sorry, sorry to my family, sorry to the citizens. It takes a little toll on me and my family, but with God, in God's hands. Primera materia, Dios mantiene la lenta. Once again, I'm sorry and thank you for coming this evening.
Can I say a comment, Mr. Ramos?
Go ahead, ma'am.
Based on what you said and if you really cared for the district and what everybody has said and mentioned that. And that's very good that you serve the community and we applaud you for that. But the reputation of Progreso ISD, you have not given a good example and you have not been a good role model to our district. And if you had some decency today, like you had the, you know, to apologize, you would resign for the best interest of the district. And that's all I want to say.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, we're going to go with item A4 for the approval of the minutes, December 17th, 2024, December 24th, 2024, January 27th, 2025, February 24th, 2025, March 25th, 2025, April 8th, 2025, May 5th, 2025, May 14th, 2025, May 19th, 2025, and May 7th, 27th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the board minutes?
Motion by Ms. Martinez, second by Ms. Candanoza, all in favor say aye. Argus say aye.
I just have a comment really quick.
Go ahead.
Why is it taking us so long to approve all of those minutes back till December?
We were a little behind, ma'am, but today, as you can see, May 27th was the last board meeting. So we're going to be bringing every board meeting, the next board meeting.
I had the same concern, you know, because it's a lot of board minutes to approve. Who is the secretary of the school board?
Working on the minutes, we have Ms. Marisol Peña and Miss Lupita Valdez. They were the ones helping us out. I met with them already and that's why today we are up to date on the board minutes.
Well, that's excellent, but let's hope that it does not continue being this way and we can improve on that.
Yes, ma'am.
And really quick, I know Ms. Armento did her comment. I wanted to, but we went straight into the minutes. I just wanted to ask the attorney if there's any way that he could explain to the community how despite that, Ms. Flores... despite that Ms. Flores, Ms. Armento, and myself had requested for him to resign or to be done something with Mr. Ramos, why we can't rearrange the board, why we can't do that, can he explain just to the community so that we don't have to do it like one by one when we get approached?
My concern is just there's nothing on the agenda that allows for a discussion of this matter, right? All I can say is that the removal process is not one for the board, the board does not have the authority to remove a board. You can look at board policy in the district, you can find the policy on how a board removal process works. The board itself does not have the authority to remove a board.
Thank you, that's sufficient.
Perfect, district reports.
Good afternoon, Mr. Board President, members of the board, community. Today was the last day of summer school in our enrichment program, and I'm very happy to say that we have more than a hundred and thirty students per campus. At the elementary level, we had the enrichment program reflecting folklorico, art, gaming, and athletics, which is great, forty percent of those students did not need summer school, so they registered just for the enrichment program. Also, as you know, we are working on finalizing the golf tournament, up to now, the district has about ten companies that registered, I believe Mr. Agapito had some more, and Mr. Ramos had some more, the goal is to have thirty-five, but I think we're gonna surpass it. So I'm gonna pass out the information. And I wanna take this opportunity to invite the community members, if anybody is interested in helping out in our golf tournament. This fundraiser will be used as scholarship for our seniors. So the ones that just graduated will benefit from this, Mr. Lazzaro, now that I see you here, before you go, please make sure you sign up. We do have silver, which is four hundred dollars for one team, and every team will have a three-man team. Then we have the gold, a thousand two hundred and fifty, that's sponsoring three teams, and then two thousand five hundred. We sponsoring three teams, social media coverage, whole sponsor, and we're gonna put you on the billboard. I know you're gonna sign up for the two thousand five hundred, Mr. Lazzaro.
Open to men and women.
It is open to men and women, oh yeah, that's true, we put it right here, but yes, everyone is invited, we will have it on August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, at Tierra Santa Golf Course.
Did you say what the funds we're gonna be for?
For, yes, for our graduating class two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five.
I encourage all the community to support this initiative, and I encourage all the board members to to bring all your resources.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Coronado, can you think of how you're gonna choose the recipient? I just wanna be, I wanna be clear of how the students can actually.
Yadi, I'm sorry, I'm gonna raise your volume.
I got the question. Yes, so, so once. Ms. Flores, that's.
Yeah, they heard your question, so they're gonna answer.
That's a very good question, Ms. Flores, once we get the totals, I'm gonna bring it to the board. Yes, Ms. Flores, that's a very good question, once we get the totals, we're gonna be very transparent to the community and to the board. I'm gonna bring it up to you, and then together, we're gonna make sure that we have all the protocols as to who and how they're gonna get the funds.
Yes.
Thank you very much, that was a very good question. Any questions on the golf tournament? Again, everyone is invited, I see the mayor here, I'm gonna take the application tomorrow to your office, hopefully we can get some teams from the city as well. We started our recruitment process this week, we are going to visit all the different neighborhoods that we have here in Progreso. That is part one of the parameter. Our administrative team will be there knocking on doors, talking to people, and we do want to recruit, but we also wanna connect with the community. We wanna listen to them to see what is that we can do to better the quality of our service and the quality of education. The second parameter is, we're gonna be sending different teams to West Loco, to Santa Maria, to Donna, to Walmart, Peter Piper, to see if we can recruit students from the outside. And I'll keep you posted, I have a flyer right here that I wanna share with you. And if you have any ideas, give me a call, any feedback, anything that you feel can work to recruit students, let us know. We have a lot of positive things happening in Progreso, in fact, Mr. Lazzaro is here because he's gonna give an update on the track and field. We will be having ribbon cutting for the community, and we'll keep you posted on that. We have a thousand three hundred and fifty more or less, ma'am. House Bill fourteen eighty-one, I know a lot of parents, a lot of community members are asking about this. As you know, the state of Texas and the governor just passed a law which will ban students from using cell phones. So I'm gonna pass it on to our attorney so he can give us an update.
Good evening members of the board, so there's a lot of new Senate bills and House bills that came out of the eighty-ninth legislative session. And so right now, we're currently working on an update on all the relevant laws that are gonna be affecting the school districts. There was a, the governor's deadline to veto was Monday, and so he didn't veto some bills. And so we're now compiling the list of all the bills that are affecting school districts, the cellphone in classrooms is one of those. And so part of what we're putting together is gonna be an options to the districts on what they can do and how they can reach compliance on those new laws. You might have seen the news also, there's Senate Bill ten regarding the Ten Commandments in the classrooms, there's that one regarding the cellphones. So there's a lot of things actually that are coming out of there, and so ourselves and Tasbe and other organizations are kind of working and siphoning with some of those, because there's not a lot of guidance on how to implement them, and so in the next couple of weeks, as we prepare for the school year, I anticipate that we're gonna be getting a policy update for the board to consider regarding the application of these policies, and we'll be getting the options to the superintendent as to what the legal compliance portion can be for that. Some school districts, for example, are considering cellphone signal scramblers. But however, there are some safety institutes that are recommending against that because of scenarios like active shooters. If we need to be able to call, or we need to be able to make phone calls, if there's like a threat to the school district, others are considering the pouches at Ziploc and that are timed to be able to open them. So there's different options that are gonna be available to districts, and we're kind of putting those together for guidance to understand the compliance portion of it.
I know that one of the main concerns from the parent's perspective is, okay, what's gonna happen if there's an emergency? Right now, the students have the opportunity to text them, you know, this is happening at school. But once we get to the resolution part, we'll work with parents and we'll create a committee, and we'll bring the resolution to you. Any questions on House Bill fourteen eighty-one? Now I would like to present Mr. George Lazzaro, he has an update on the track and field.
Thank you, Mr. Coronado, good evening, board members, what a pleasure to be here with you this evening. For the record, I'm George Lazzaro, engineer with Fulcrum Consulting Services, Texas license nine six three nine six. And I'm the engineer that's been working with the district to bring together your project for your turf football field improvements along with the track. And I'm glad to report that today I had a chance to come out and visit with the superintendent working on the project. I was real, real satisfied with what I saw with respect to the work done on the turf, it's looking real good. We've been working closely with Hellas Construction to try to finalize the final details of the track improvements. All the compaction has been done, that's necessary for the track and field, all the concrete curbs have been put in place. What has hindered Hellas from completing the project is that we all are aware that we've been having several rain events. It's absolutely critical that we have a dry period before they put down the final material on that track. Otherwise, it may be exposed to failure. They can continue watching like we are the weather forecast to see what a period, whether it's an adequate period. It needs between five and seven days to complete, and talking to the superintendent this morning for construction. If everything appears to follow like it's going right now, it may be Monday or Tuesday when they mobilize to start working on those actions. That'll allow them to put down the material and do the necessary markings to complete the track and field. But they're anticipating weather permitting that everything will be completed by around mid-July. So we'll keep on monitoring that, and we'll keep on giving reports to Mr. Coronado as we're moving along. While I'm here, I also wanna give you a report on the status of funding for a major grant that was submitted under the authorization of the board back in November, which was the EPA Climate Resilient Grant. And it's a grant that, that under the direction of the board, our firm prepared and submitted to EPA seeking up to twenty million for roof repairs, also parking lot repairs, and providing solar panel to the different school buildings and measures in the hopes to try to cut down energy costs, also replacing AC units at all our district buildings. And I'm glad here, I wanna report to you all that those applications are still moving forward at this time. Under President Trump, those were put on hold for a while, but they are still continue being reviewed on a rolling basis. And you all are prime, still a prime candidate for granting this amount of money simply because of your close proximity to the Mexico border, there's special funding that came along with this for entities like the school district, where if you were within a hundred and fifty miles from the border, and you and the students you service were at or below the poverty level, you got extra points. So based on that, we prepared that application, so let's keep on keeping our fingers crossed, maybe we hear something positive, it'll be good for the school district if we can secure that fund. Unless anybody has any questions for me, that's my report for tonight.
I have a question on that EPA grant, I remember when you guys mentioned it. I think you mentioned that only, we were the only district in the region that applied for it?
Well, I understand that Brownsville also applied, but not for the full twenty, but there was a hundred fifty million set up for it, so you all are within that blanket.
And I know it's a process, but I think you also mentioned about teaming up with a nonprofit organization or something.
We went ahead and teamed up with a local nonprofit organization called Regional Mobility Authority, and they're a housing type of development assistant group, that's a nonprofit working along the Rio Grande Valley, and that was one group that came in to help us put the application together. Now, they do not get any funds from this, it's strictly assisting to put the application together, and that was one of the requirements in order to bring an application like this to fruition.
Thank you.
I just have a question.
Yes ma'am.
Back on the track and field, I was just thinking, because you said depending on the weather, so that it can be completed, it has to be completely dry. I know it's hurricane season, so with everything, what if something happens to it? Are we gonna be like protected, or you never know, we don't know if there is some disaster coming in, or how does that gonna work?
That's a very good question, and there is instruments that are in place for something like that, as part of the contract. There's an engineering, there's an insurance component that comes along with it, quality performance and payment fund. Should there be a disaster and that occurs, then there's a means to correct it. But that's the reason that, that we don't wanna get to that point, that's the reason that myself and the contractor are looking at this schedule so carefully, because we need that five-day period where it can stand a little bit of rain, it just can't stand a flooding type of event that's gonna hurt the subgrade or the bottom material where that final subsurface is placed. But yes, there's an instrument there that in case that happens, you can revert.
Because it's costing a lot of money.
It is, it is, but.
Wanna make sure.
Just state law requires that anytime that there's an investment over fifty thousand of public type monies, the contractor needs to provide a performance event to cover those interests. And that, and all of that was taken care of in this project, working closely with attorney, and of course our superintendent to make sure those safeguards were put in place.
Thank you.
Was the prime contract with your organization or with Hellas?
I was the design engineer for it, I'm responsible for the design and making sure they put it in, but the actual contractor is Hellas Construction.
But I mean the contract.
Oh, the contract is with Hellas.
Prime contract.
The prime contract is with Hellas.
Did it, did a pay skill certified job?
I don't.
A Davis Bacon project?
Not this one.
Not this one?
No, they don't have to guarantee, under the Davis Bacon Act, they're required to certify a certain amount of payment for hourly employees. That did not apply to this contract.
Do we have more or less a date of when they're gonna have an answer for us for the grant?
No, we don't, it's rolling, and at one time, under the President Trump's administration, actually, it was terminated. But there's been a group, a group of people that have challenged them in court, and now it has come back, and he's reducing monies at different stages. So we're keeping our fingers crossed, and we're keeping updated, and we go from there.
Thank you.
I wish, I wish I did have a date for you, because we would be very, very excited to come in and report to you that those funds are coming down to the district.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds really good. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we do have the fence and doors update, I have Ms. Ramon this.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Mr. President. The fence, basically, the last thing they're completing or working on right now is the gates, they already did the electrical, the motor. Next month, we're gonna bring you the access point proposal, we're gonna do the same thing that we're doing at the campus door, gonna work with the magnetic.
On the fence, I did have a question, I noticed over here on Malone, in front of the baseball, that Hurricane Fines was knocked down completely and restructured higher. Over here in the elementary, it looks like they used the same pole and just put extension, was that part of the contract, or was it supposed to be? Knocked down completely and rebuilt?
Close saving, but stay within budget.
Okay. Wanted to make sure, is the auditorium gonna, is part of that construction?
That's what I'm going right. It demolished.
Okay.
Doors, they're working on it right now, actually, tomorrow as well, we have a preliminary walk-through tomorrow as well, all the concerns with doors would change, they're all here. So they're currently working on it.
On the one from the auditorium, I know you had told us that we wanted to demolish it, but seeing how they had already started, wouldn't that be an option where they had already to add? Because like, it's gonna be costly to demolish.
They tried it, but it got to a point where there was nothing, so I don't know if you saw the actual poles that were just bent by the wind. So that was not an option, they tried it, but it didn't work.
It's not an option.
Not an option, but I'll talk to you about the different options, so we can move forward.
One more question, was the demolish, I know there's like pieces of fences at DTMS, I saw last time that we did the walkthrough, and they're like, they don't serve a purpose, is that part of the?
It's a part of the audit, I mean, part of the audit, part of the auction.
Someone was sold to the auction.
They were sold in the auction, we made money.
Okay, so they are gonna be removed, okay.
Once we finalize the fence and doors, I'll let you know, we're gonna do a walkthrough before signing off on it. Any questions? That's all I have.
Thank you.
But that's, we too, presented by Energy Services.
But these are the extras, if you wanna leave it here, that way Mari Sol can give. There you go.
Hello, thank you guys for having us today, superintendent of board members. My name is Juan Galván, I'm the chief operating officer of Valued Energy Sources. We're a energy consulting firm, much different from your current broker right now, you guys are with Tasbe. We do, we're a turnkey operation, we work with lots of stuff. Uh, we do, we're a turnkey operation. We work with lots of stuff. Um, before I get started, just to piggyback on what the previous presentation was on, on the $20 million grant. We actually could fund all that at zero interest fee with a small administrative. Working right now with Hidalgo ISD, we're doing their lights. Uh, we're working with San Benito ISD, we're doing a scoreboard, doing dancing lights as well. We do all kinds of projects, anything infrastructure related. This is all tied into your energy. Uh, we're able to help you review that. So I just wanted to mention that. So, um, we've been around since, oh, it's probably deregulation, 2023, uh, through some form of another. Uh, we concentrate really trying to reinvent the wheel because like most consultants come out here, they'll sign you up. And then you'll see them again when it's time to sign you up again. Uh, you guys currently are in a 10 year contract with Tasby. You guys haven't seen their energy films come out here too to see you guys. We're pillars of the community. As we mentioned right now, we'll definitely be your golf tournament. We'll be all the events. We'll make sure one of, one of the partners that you guys event going forward. But what really separates us though, from everybody else is the actual, what, what we actually do. We actually look at all aspects of energy. Uh, there's two parts to every bill, right? There you see what you're actually using and then you see your utility charge, your AP charge, right? We work with you guys hand in hand with demand response, whether like they're not LED. We work LED, different things that we're able to help you guys with. Uh, we look for grants. We also have a team that comes out here, looks for any streetlights you guys have out, uh, in the parking lot that belong to you guys. Whether it's AEP, if it's through AEP, we work with them. Go ahead and replace if it's out, it's free of charge. If you guys want to replace a high, a high pressure sodium, which is the, the yellowish lights that you see to an LED light, $137. That's what we work with, that we hand in hand with. Um, if you want to look at some of the different things that we've done, uh, we've assisted the city of Edinburgh. They were in a bind, uh, coming out of contract. We're able to help them in a reverse bidding process, get that taken care of quickly. We found some anomalies with Idea Public Schools. They were in the wrong classification code. So we're able to give them back $11,400 per month. So that was able to help them out as well. In Roma, they were paying taxes in error. So we recovered $128,000 for them. Uh, La Jolla was out of contract as well, right before Windstorm Yuri hit. So had we not helped them with that, they would have had a couple million dollar bill. We also assisted them Boys and Girls Club McAllen, giving back taxes as well. Uh, on, on you guys, since you guys are rural, uh, you guys may be paying a PCC assessment tax. Once we dissect the bills, maybe we get that money back for you guys. And that's, I think about two and a half percent of what you guys are paying electricity. I, I haven't seen your bill currently, so I don't know exactly what that is. Um, then we have, uh, the next page just references. Well, we have a majority of the cities here in Hidal County, Hidal County. We have a lot of different school districts. I know we worked with Ms. Ramírez, uh, some different districts as well. Uh, we just picked up San Benito, which is not on this list. Going on the next page, integrated efficiency. This is similar to what I was speaking to you guys about right now. Uh, we have different programs for you guys. Uh, we have a, to be able to do HVACs, uh, any of, anything really infrastructure related. As I said, in Hidalgo, we're doing, uh, we're doing actually lights for the tennis courts. We're able to find some grants for them through the United States Tennis Association and through Dick's Sporting Goods. They was able to cover the new LED lighting for them. Um, and in San Benito, we're able to find a grant for the lights as well. We were hand in hand with all these things. Uh, one of the great programs that we have at the back here is that we are able to have some funds that were allotted to us through the Inflation Reduction Act, the Green Deal. Uh, and we have enough to be able to do 200 units here, called what's called the CoolSaver. But we'll send in a team to do, uh, AC tune up for up to 200 units, 25 tons. And this free of charge for the district to become our client. Uh, and what, what happened is they'll come in, they'll do up to 25 tons, 200 units, and the remaining they'll do next year. This is going about an $80,000 service and this free of charge for you. Uh, like I said, they clean the handler inside, they clean the outside unit and they replace the filter. And then even to go a step further, any employees of the district who want this at their house, they just sign up through the same portal and they get their, their houses. That's all free of charge. Uh, then that we have, this is a great thing. I know it's been a somber meeting today, so let's try and get some, uh, some, here's some, uh, great thing for the community. Uh, this is called the Infinity Program. What this program does, it gives you guys, uh, the school board, the, the faculty, members, uh, and, and the constituents of the ISD. It gives them a lower rate at their home. So they're able to go ahead and sign up for their lower rate at their home. This completely separates it to you. So soon as I know you guys, I think your current contract with Tasby expires in 2028. But if you guys sign up with us, once you guys sign up with us, this becomes effective immediately for all the constituents, faculty, staff, everybody here. Uh, currently the rate I believe is 7.6 cents right now at your home. And like I said, there is a soft credit check for, for most people. I mean, so it's, it's not that bad. But that's would be the, the rate for, for at your home. So I'm not sure exactly what you're paying. Most people just pay the bill. They don't look at it. But I guarantee you it's in the, the double digits. And this would definitely help, like I said, it'd be a good, a good win for the, for the board too. Uh, the next page just gives you a QR code. It's just generic code. It doesn't come out to anything. But if, if the district would like, I mean, the board would like, I can go ahead and give you guys an actual link and the actual link, uh, for La Jolla, San Benito. Uh, we have a couple other schools that are already participating in this and that would show you what the actual rate is. And then finally, uh, as I said, uh, the last page is the CoolSaver program. Like I said, that, that also would qualify, would have the, the employees of the district qualify for that as their personal residence. The only caveat is the AC has to be at least one euro. I know I went through it really fast. I know, but you guys, uh, comments took a lot. I don't want you guys to be here all night either. So, uh, questions, concerns for us?
Any questions, concerns, costs?
Zero actually. Zero. So like I said, when we said we reinvented the wheel, we went back and said, what does, what do school districts and cities need? That's the majority of our clients. What do they need? And the one thing we were like, okay, well, we need to be able to help the constituents. That's number one. That's where the affinity program should create it. We need to be able to help, you know, help demand response, lower their AP charges. That's where we're able to get a lot of the funds for the CoolSaver program. And then ultimately we partnered up with Nextera and they were able to do the financing part for you guys. And that's financed at zero interest. There is a small administrator fee of 0.5% roughly. It's a sliding scale, but like in Hidalgo's case, and they're, they're getting their light done at zero interest. Now they're doing lights, you'll, they'll have dancing lights just like you're at the UT Stadium, you know, the same thing as well. And that's at zero interest.
So are you guys like general contractors and hire subs?
Well, the, the GC is in fact Nextera. That is correct. He's, uh, he, his name is Tim Karakostas. He's, he's an electrical engineer and he is the G. But we go ahead and hire local people because we're based out of Florida with Nextera's.
There is a cost.
No, there's no cost. That's to, to join this program, no cost. Now, if you decide to, if you decide to purchase HVACs, yes, obviously there is a cost, yes, sir. But, uh, but like there is no cost. Like I said, there is no interest fee. There is a small administrative fee.
So basically you would need, you would need a light bill from, from how, how, like?
Just one month.
One month?
Just one month, probably. And we can do an analysis. We can come back and, uh, you know, I mean, some of the buildings here are old. So I'm, I'm pretty sure that the AP charge is a little bit higher than they should be. We can work with AP and see if we can get a reduction for you guys immediately.
So can you provide an analysis for us and then present it to us that we can decide?
Sure. I just need a copy of the bills.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that. Mr. Ramones. Okay. All right.
Any other questions, concerns?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to be three Tasby pay system review.
Uh, Mr. President, members of the board. This would be to analyze our pay scale, just to see how we compare with other districts. The cost would be 8,850 plus about $2,000 of travel reimbursement for consulting. They will give us, the summary will present to you, um, how competitive we are, uh, across the state, across the region. And then to see if, if, uh, we're competitive like with Wesley Codon and, and they're going to give us also some strategies to try to improve and to try to get there.
There were some questions. I think Ms. Martinez asked me a question regarding why were some districts publishing already their, their rates and stuff? So I just want to, you know, you're in different budget cycles. That's why. So there's some districts who have budget cycles that are already due this month. So they are already approving budgets and they're already approving, uh, things because they are, they are ahead of you. But you're in a, you're in a different budget cycle that doesn't run, runs through July. And so that's why you're not at that stage yet. But you will be at the stage where you're going to be getting your pay compensation plan coming to you in the next couple of weeks. You're going to get your budget. You're going to get your proposed tax rate. But those other districts are just, they're on a June cycle. You're on a July cycle. So just for some context, I know that there's a lot of publishing in other districts about this topic. That's why you haven't seen it here yet.
So just in case teachers are watching from home, or we have teachers here in the audience, we're working on it for the next month.
Now, if you do want to get on a June cycle, right, we can have that conversation. And what you can do with that, you can actually save money on the budget coming up for a full month and add that to your general fund. So if you all want to consider that for the next school year, we need to be having that conversation in December. And what that would do, it would switch our fiscal year to end June 30th, open up our budgets for staff as early as, as, uh, July 1st. And that would save you a whole month of budgeting that you can add to your general fund. So if you're interested in that, we're happy to bring that up to you on the November, December timeline.
That sounds really good.
This is, this is actually very, very, a very good idea. Uh, I know that Tasby has been along, has been around for a long time. Have we, has Perez done this before?
We, we did it when TA got here about 10 years ago. And, and the base of our pay scale was because of Tasby. We've been changing, changing it. We'll be trying to help our, our teachers. Uh, so once we pass the new compensation plan, they're going to get that and they're going to analyze it and compare it.
If we do this once or every two years, you know, that, that'd be good for, for our teachers. I know the, so it says HR services. Is there, is this part of that HR services just a pay review or do they provide HR consulting maybe?
So they, they provide a lot of different.
I know there's like HR firms out there that, that with everything that's going on, maybe it'd be good to either get a consultant in here. Or proposals through Tasby and maybe low, other local. You know, we're in probation, so make sure that, that'll help us do our due diligence.
Any other questions?
That, that is a very, very good question. Ms. Valdez is telling me that it's several months, Ms. Flores.
As long as it goes in before the, the next year's site, the next.
Definitely. I think we should consider giving some help if we can move forward. I know teachers and administrators have for anxious.
Any other questions? I'll need a motion, ladies and gentlemen.
I make the motion to approve the Tasby pay system review.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Perez, second by Mr. Costa, and first by, against NA. Motion passes. Okay. Now we got a C1 interlocal agreement with South Texas College, Boras ISD, Boras Early College High School.
Mr. President, members of the board, this is a renewal for this year. It stayed the same as last year. Administration is recommending to approve it.
No changes.
No changes.
I make a motion to approve the C1 interlocal agreement with South Texas College Boras ISD. Second.
Motion by Ms. Martinez, second by Ms. Costa, and first by, against NA. Motion passes. Um, memorandum between Rio Grande Valley Independent School Districts, Charter Schools and Rio Grande Valley Institution Higher Education. Um, for the mathematics and English language arts courses, Region One, distance learning.
Yes, Mr. Board Member, uh, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, we need to pass this in order to send some teachers to get training. And, uh, once they get the certification with that training, they're going to be able to teach college prep, mathematics and English language arts, which will help us in our CCMR indicator.
College prep mathematics. Will take place here at the high school.
Yes, yes. The teachers will take the training, then they're going to come back. We're going to add those classes to the master schedule and it'll, it'll count to CCMR.
Awesome.
I see funding says NA. Why, why NA? Cause we're not, we don't have to pay for it or?
Uh, for, for the actual MOU, no. We're, we're just going to create the MOU.
Oh, okay. So we're approving the MOU?
The MOU between us and, and, and the ones that will provide the train.
Should an MOU have a, a cost? So.
Okay.
We need a motion for that. Can I make a motion to approve C2?
Motion by Ms. Martinez.
Second.
Second by Ms. Costa, and first by, against NA. Motion passes. C3, Region One Distance Learning.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Mr. Board President, we're requesting the renewal of Region One Distance Learning Consortium. What it is, it allows us to provide, uh, online trainings for the teachers, especially the first two weeks of professional development. And it has all the mandatory tra, trainings from sexual harassment. Uh, all of the mandatory trainings are there and they do it online as a course.
Any questions? $4,000 is nothing. Uh, so that, that's good. Uh, do you know if our teachers are really taking advantage of it?
Yes, they have to have a certification and specifically the ones that are mandatory, they have to submit into HR. Cause every year there are a number of, of required, uh, training that they have to complete. So it gives you an assessment at the end of the course and then they provide you with a certificate that they have to submit.
That's good of their unit.
Any other questions from Ms. Corona?
I make a motion to approve Region One Distance Learning Consortium.
Motion by Ms. Martinez.
Second.
Second by Ms. Perez, and first by, against NA. Motion passes. Do you have C4 too? Go ahead.
Um, the next one is a renewal for Megabyte Cooperative Agreement. It's also with Region One. We utilize this one for students. The last, um, it's professional developments for students. So the last training that they attended was the STEM Fest. We invited all the elementary students from PEC and from elementary to attend. And they had like STEM, robotics, they do a lot of conferences for students and they're also going to do EdSports. So they're going to allow students to engage in gaming competitions. And it's part of the cooperative agreement. It allows us to have four that are competing.
Do they provide any technology or nor they, they like, uh, laptops or stuff like that?
No, they provide more than anything professional development, like for the students and for the teachers that have to do with technology.
Right. Good, good.
Any other questions from Ms. Corona? All right.
I make a motion to approve Megabyte Cooperative Agreement.
Motion by Ms. Martinez, second by Ms. Costa, and first by, against NA. Motion passes. You have D-MAC too? Go ahead.
So for D-MAC, we're renew, asking for the renewal of D-MAC. This is our, um, data management system that we utilize pretty much for everything. For teacher, teacher evaluations, STAR data, principals evaluation, LPAC. Um, we're asking for your approval to renew it.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve C5 D-MAC Solutions Agreement.
Motion by Ms. Martinez, second by Ms. Cananos, and first by, against NA. Motion passes. But 2025, 2026 TA allotment.
As you remember, we, uh, chose Blue Bonnet for the high school through Lasso 3 about two months ago. Uh, I was able to meet with Ms. Van Hee at Region One, trying to help us out because as you remember, we paid $100,000 to build the grant. And, uh, we want to do an amendment because they're going to help us out with DTMS and elementary as well. So, uh, we are going to expand it to DTMS and elementary for Blue Bonnet math.
At, at that same.
At that same, the same price? Okay. That's what I was going to ask. Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve the 2025, 2026 TA allotment.
Motion by Ms. Martinez, second by Ms. Cananos, and first by, against NA. Motion passes. At this time, we go to surplus property auction update.
Sir, um, we had our auction on June 7th, 2025, the net, uh, the auction resulting in a total net profit of $27,403 with 24.
How much? I'm sorry?
$27,000.
How much did we do the last time?
Did everything, did, did everything get sold?
Everything.
Everything got sold?
Old.
We gave them a week.
Yeah, cause I saw those fences rose. Were through like FFA is that?
Oh, they, they took them away.
Oh, yeah. No, the, the only one that we auctioned were the one that.
Okay, not the ones back there.
After the auction, we'll take them away and we'll do it again.
All right. Any other questions on the auction? At this time, thank you. At this time, was, huh? No, let's just not play. At this time, we go to student athletic insurance renew.
We have the student athletic insurance renewal. This covers athletics, 12 and, uh, eight through 12, old school activity. That's 44,000.
When was the last bid for this?
Last year. We have to renew it every year.
Bids? Do we get bids every year? Do we have a comparison?
Yeah. No, no, we, we should. Where's Ivan? Ivan, on the athletic insurance, do we go out for bids or how do we do the renewal? It's, it's, it's comes from the recommendation from the AD.
I know that, uh.
Excuse me?
Are we getting the money for money?
That would be Ivan's, Ivan. But on the claims, but on the claims, they 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 do a good job with with the student. No students had no issues. Okay.
The rate is gonna stay the same.
The rate stays the same. Alright, can I ask who the agent is? Who who's the agent?
Yes, uh, student athletic.
Who?
It comes from student athletic insurance plans.
New York Life Insurance. When when does it expire?
Runs through August thirty-first.
That was.
Old school year.
Do we still have time?
I think.
Do we have another, what was that?
Ms. J, they're just asking if we still have time to get another quote.
But the thing is that you you gotta understand that, I mean, we we of course we have football right next month, I don't know if we have time, because remember we start two days.
Practice right now.
Oh, but this will be effect up to thirty-first of August. It finishes August thirty-first? Okay, the first official day is August first. I think we should go off.
Still have time, yes.
Ask for quotes. And 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 I tell you, uh, as a businessman.
So, yeah, that's that's right, right now you only have a renewal. You don't do it through the renewal, you have to bring it back to a board meeting to approve going out bids for the R F Us or the R F Es, whatever you're gonna request to receive the for your service or whatever.
So you rather just table?
It it's up to you all, but you wouldn't be able to authorize bids today, you would need to call a special meeting or wait to your next meeting to be able to.
Would there be a problem if we table it, Mr. Ivan, Mr.?
No, because we'll we'll be covered till August. The coverages. Let let's table it, because insurances have gone, they're crazy right now.
So you have about sixty days in between, if you all need to do that, if you all wanna do that, then you all need to have a meeting before we go out and break to authorize going out for bids, otherwise you're not gonna make it on time before it comes in and you're gonna risk lapses.
Coverages. I'm okay with a special meeting. Yeah, let's do that, Coach. Alright, alright, at this time I need a motion to tell the idea.
I make a motion to table the student athletic insurance renew, second.
Motion by Ms. Martinez, second by Ms. Costa, and first by I, against NA. Motion passes, at this time we go to D three. Consideration possible action to approve resolution requesting installation of video audio equipment for the special ed education classrooms.
There was a board member request to add an item to party, uh, cameras in special ed contained units. Um, the law requires that it be requested by your parents or the the board itself requested in the units, so what's on here right now, what would what this would allow, it would allow administration to uh put cameras, special education units.
Where's my key?
Sorry? Oh, in order to uh to be used for whatever purpose would be needed, parents could request it for to see what's going on with their children, the administration can use it for evaluation purposes, review of classroom management, whatever it is, um, this would allow for you to be able to do that. Now, this is not purchase cameras and this is not set funds aside, all that would still have to come back to the board, you have to budget for it and you have to actually uh go out for a bid for the camera systems, but this just allows administration to begin working on those processes for it. It's pretty common amongst schools having nowadays.
And it's for all the campuses, right?
Yes, but it's only.
Yeah, I know, but for all the campuses.
I make a motion to approve the cons- consideration of possible approval of resolution requested the installation of video and audio monitoring.
I'll second that one.
Motion by Ms. Martinez, second by Ms. Salomita, and first by I, against NA. Motion passes, at this time we go to G four, versus the coaches handbook twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Mr. Coach, Ivan?
Now, members of the board, community, we are bringing over the past half that I've been uh serving as the athletic director, one of the things that we wanted to do was create, we didn't have a handbook that was created uh that would basically guide athletics for uh all aspects of athletics. Um, so one of the things that we did was we started in-house a handbook that covered almost every topic that a coach, a new coach would be able to have questions about to ensure that there was uh solid answers for these coaches. In talking to Mr. Coronel, felt it necessary to be able to bring it up to the board to make sure it was board approved, um, we had been basically using it in-house. Um, for our athletic department, it was just an athletic form or an athletic document that was guiding our coaches. But in doing so, we just felt it was necessary to bring it to the board to make sure that we could make some changes, just felt that if we had a uh manual that actually covered everything from transportation issues to coaching requirements uh to handle any situation, communication with parents, because students were able to uh better assist our coaches in in handling the situation, so the original handle, because that now has been on several web chats with U I L trying to figure out some of the areas that we can fix, be able to update our athletic handbook. Just felt that those areas were necessary to be able to be addressed, so we did add an addendum, which is what you saw or what you see in uh the packet that I've just given you, that included uh some of those areas from hiring practices to coaches evaluation, education, we did include a copy of the coaches evaluation that coached last half. We have those on file with the athletic copy. The record T P for coaches, does have an organizational chart that includes the athletics organizational chart, all that. This upcoming year, that is. Coaching staff that's returning and then any opening. So uh, it approved, handbook would basically serve for this upcoming year and going forth, if anything else that would like to be addressed, uh we can sit on this quarter now and make sure we can adjust it after, uh, but right now it does touch upon everything, accountability, hiring, development, all stakeholders basically athletics and making sure that everybody's aware of what, how athletics is gonna be run at Progressos.
I like the evaluation part. Teachers get evaluated, so I think coaches should too.
Offer evaluation to coaches and then uh coaches do a self-evaluation also of the program, of their their own program and then also of the program in general. The athletic program.
The organizational chart is also important.
Well, the the every single coach is gonna be receiving one of these, right?
This, the coaches that will be receiving one is on the, it's in there, uh, if you guys can see. As of. And everybody will be receiving, anybody who decides to coach this upcoming year, going forth at Progressos D will have to receive. And it does have two areas that they do have to sign, which are head coaches duties, assistant coaches duty, uh and then just the acknowledgement form that gets filed with our H R director.
Hey man, what have you happened to add more more sports?
Uh, we can, ma'am, the only thing, um, that we just add an addendum to it and we can adjust it to make sure that we can know that there was some question. Parkings for now, also for powerlifting and uh the other sports that we wanna try and bring in, um, so that we can make sure and uh adjust it, submit everything in terms of the numbers, the numbers that are on there are just estimates uh for what we do have already in-house, all the sports that we do have, so you guys can type it and everything. These also reflect the raises that you all approved this year. Head coaches stipends for the assistant coaches stipends at the high school, uh and all coaching stipends at the middle school as well, everybody received raises last year. Uh, we received, we have our head coaches at fifty-five hundred, our assistants at the high school at three thousand and our middle school coaches at twenty-five. And the only reason for the discrepancy between middle school and high school is because of the number of coaches that are game, at middle school we have a ten-game season, high school we have about an eighteen-game season, not including postseason.
So every coach will get a training and a mandate?
Yes.
So we can stay compliant with U I L?
We're actually in talks with U I L to see if they could get somebody here for us that would allow for for additional professional development, this year we do have ten coaches that are going to professional development or coaching school at our special association. Uh, it's like third week of July, we have uh our seven coaches for the football staff and two of our two volleyball coaches. All the rest of the sports, basketball, soccer, golf, cross-country and track, go throughout the year to individual sport conferences, those do not include. They are included in this one, but they prefer to go, the basketball has a basketball association, benches they'd like to go to, uh and soccer, I'll have I'll have all different ones. But we are looking for representatives to come in and just give an overall training in terms of basically monitoring uh accountability for U I L.
And how about the athletic trainers, they're also getting updates on everything?
Yes.
Yes, yes, they they use the athletic trainer, they have they have a convention, uh, that's uh seminar that they have and then we are wanting to see, uh, sending them regularly to mention that they would be able to offer that service for our students here in-house as well to just kind of keep up to date with all the new therapies that are afforded to her.
Even the phone.
Are you gonna find someone to be like in charge of like making sure like the people besides Ivan, because I know Ivan can get real busy with everything? Um, who's gonna be like helping a system so we can make sure that the U I L, they're following everything?
I've been meeting with with Ivan throughout the past three weeks, uh, once we get to the compensation plan adjustment, I'll bring it to you. And um, you need to make sure that you vote to add that to uh this structure, then after that we'll follow the process that uh Mr. Gonzalez was just describing right now.
I just know because I know that all are probably under the call of probation, so I wanna make sure that they're all.
Yes, ma'am, definitely.
Yes, and this will help for that, this handbook here, that's definitely gonna help for. Make sure the football coaches get them, okay, Ms. Flores?
No, that's a great idea, principals need to be involved.
I've been talking to Mr. Nolte from from U I L on a weekly basis, uh, he was very happy that we were taking it to the board. As soon as you approve it, I'm gonna send it to him, he's gonna let us know if we need to adjust anything, so we'll we'll be going back and forth, uh, this is a working document, uh, if we need to make any changes, I'll bring it back to you.
Alright, any other questions? On the uh, on the stipend amounts, is that what we did last year, that's what the school district did or how? We gave them a we gave them a raise last year. And that was another thing that I was gonna mention, it like we're doing the pay uh through TASB. Do you know if there's an organization or maybe even through TASB that they can find out uh what the average is?
Actually, it it was part of the TASB review, yes, they're they're gonna review the stipends as well.
Okay, good. Good question. Any other comments, questions?
I just wanna say, uh, I wanna congratulate all the, everything that's happening in our district and the on the students as as well, like all the dedication that had they they're putting in and the coaches and everybody. Um, but I just wanna question, like, what is the morale of the students, you know, um? I see that there's a very low number in football uh players versus soccer players. Um, I don't know if it's because of the coaching or is it because of what what what, I don't know if you can tell me, I know it's a little bit out of topic, but it what is, what do you think is the?
Arounds all the way through. Dogwood, all the all the border. Uh, and that's something that did obviously very special last so many years. Um, football, I think, is just a sport that one, one thing that they talked about that we're now about to and one of the, probably wanted to add a lot of summer programs, but that already. Here, Progressos is offering this, uh, we have a we have offered some uh fire, dress a fire like early on, but they're getting into the doctor very early. Uh, when I got here years ago, I started this cover talk program and that was another thing, right? Sport, just because they joined the sport by the time they're rushing and talking more, even middle um, these kids from, we're in a very different district, Hyford and Raymondville and Realonville, air football, football. So the fact that we don't support something that causes them to kind of handicap with some of the uh, and one of the things that we're trying to do is obviously, we're investing ten more monies to make sure these programs kind of get fine, find a way.
Seven on seven.
Seven on seven, operate different programs. Basketball, for baseball, for softball, we're trying to now in terms of football, in in terms of the morale in general, I think one of the biggest things I, I mean, I've applied to the kids every year just because regardless of the the success of of the football team itself, it will show every month have the same group of kids that do say committed to it now. Uh, we're, you know, working on still trying to add more equipment, whatever they need, right, to get the coaches get them a little more money and try and find out buying this other equipment that makes the difference. Uh, right now we do have currently this, we've had over sixty-five students at strength conditioning the last three weeks, that's been on average every single day. Uh, which is the highest number we've ever had.
That's awesome.
Um, we have at least twenty twenty-five athletes in football that have been consistent, that have been consistent every single day, I know our football coaches are are offering uh like at the end of the week, they do like a little reward, I think today they offered mole to the kids and trying to find ways of enticing them to kind of stay, you know, committed to it. Uh, we're doing the same thing with strength and conditioning, uh, with the volleyball skill hour and everybody trying to find ways to make sure they wanna stay home. It's summer, they wanna be at home, but we have a huge number that's super excited for this upcoming year. And we are investing, trying to invest a little bit more money in athletics to make sure, I know the new stadium, the the field, the renovations, we're talking about renovations at the middle school gym, the high school gym as well is gonna make a big difference, that was the biggest thing I was talking to you for now about trying to still pride again really trying to make sure they're out of wearing the Professor name on their chest, name for us, because it is something that uh is gonna be the part as much as we wanna say kids are here for the education, I think athletics is a big part of why we bring them to, why they come to because they wanna wanna play, they wanna practice, so we can kind of combine the two and really mesh together, uh, the academic part and the athletic part, I think good few years of success in terms of both academic and athletic.
Another, another thing you mentioned, they've been playing since like five years old. Uh, maybe, maybe we should reach out to the city and see how the city can can bring up ways of uh helping with teams, I mean, uh, I know it's, I know we're a small community, but uh Boys and Girls Club, maybe, you know, something like that.
Actually, uh, I met with the mayor about a month ago, because the plan is to clean up the old administration building, we had the elementary right here in the corner. Uh, and try to uh get to the point where we have a youth youth center or a Boys and Girls Club. And also a library, so we're working with the city.
Maybe we can use those twenty million dollars you you got granted. Build something.
Hope the president doesn't take it away.
Right, that's that's what I mean, parking wreck, not necessarily like a Boys and Girls Club, but like a parking wreck. Yeah.
Fortunately, we do have some great coaching stuff that we have, it's just, we do have some really good coaches that we hours a night, uh, coach baseball. Even if we're not able to pay them right now, we have strength and conditioning, some of the coaches uh are able to work, but they have their skill hour. Personally with the kids to work on specifically their football, volleyball, basketball, baseball, track, whatever it may be, everybody's awarded hour, day. Uh, to to be able to work with their kids individually, especially the ball sports that can, your work area around golf, cross-country and track, we're year-round sports. So there will be tracks all year, but baseball can't, football can't, basketball can't, they can't, one hour every day, they've been taking advantage of that.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Any other question from Mr. Gonzalez for the handbook?
Thank you for this.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna need a motion for it.
I make a motion to approve the President S I S D coaches handbook, second.
Motion by Ms. Martinez, second by Ms. Costa, and first by I, against NA. Motion passes, workers, uh, review.
We have the renew for the workers' composition, our current parade is passengers. Last year's rate was two hundred and twenty-two thousand, this year's rate is one hundred eighty-five thousand. We we had a reduction on from seventeen to both ends. Requesting the approval of the company, of the renewal of the TASB workers' composition, covered for twenty-five.
Any questions, gentlemen? TASB is hard to beat. Very, it's always gonna be hard. Even on P and Cs and all that kind of.
I make a motion to approve workers' compensation renew.
Motion by Ms. Martinez. Second by Ms. Cano, on a favor, say I, I, against NA, motion passes, at this time, catch the person. Second by Ms. Cananos, honor, favor say aye. Aye, I'll give a sign name. Motion passes. At this time, catch the person.
Total catches person for the month.
Yeah, Deira, do you have a question?
No, sorry.
Go ahead.
For the month of May is.
Any questions, ladies and gentlemen? Did you review your book? Anything that you caught on checks?
What is a McGraw-Hill do?
McGraw-Hill? It's an adoption.
It's curriculum.
But NOI C T I. It says animal technology. Is that for like FFA or?
Oh, for FFA, yeah.
I did see a couple of checks for multiple checks for, for health construction. Why, why are we making multiple checks? I mean, like four, four different checks. Oh, they barely cash them in?
It's for that month of May.
No, but his question, best question is why, why can't we just give them a single check of what we approve as?
Yes, because remember that we have two different contracts with them. One was a track, the other one was a field. It was separate and apart.
But we're up to parts with them, right?
Yes.
What happened with Linebarger Goggan? I show an expense and then a credit. Or six, seven, seven of sixteen.
That's our tax collection, right?
The link with tax fees.
Eight, six, six?
Eight, seven.
Seven.
Oh, seven.
Line item, one, two, three, four, four and five.
Oh, yes. On that one, we had a process of payments. We was on oversight.
The check for O'Handon, O'Handon. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve the catches freshman.
Motion by Verris, second by Mr. Perez, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Investment report?
Yes, sir. Total investment, total invested today is ten million, ten point, ten million five hundred and ninety thousand. Current earnings is thirty-eight thousand, balance is ten million, six twenty-nine. Those require approval.
Any questions on investment report?
I make a motion to approve the investment report.
Motion by Ms. Martinez. Second by Ms. Costa, all in favor say aye. Aye, I'll give a sign name. Motion passes. Tax collection?
Total collected today is three point two million, total outstanding is eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Current tax collection collected is eighty-three. Compared to eighty-three from last.
That's what I was going to ask. Last year, we're, we're a little bit doing a lot, but better this.
A little bit higher, yeah.
Make a motion to approve the tax solution.
Second.
Motion by, by Martinez, second by Mr. Perez, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Do we have a budget update?
Budget update for your review as well. No.
No, did? Perfect. At this, we go to the policy update, one, two, three, one, two, one twenty-three, one twenty-four, one twenty-five, and that's Mr. Ramirez. Alright. Any questions on the policy updates, one twenty-three, one twenty-four and one twenty-five? Yes, you do.
Make a motion to approve the po, policy updates, one twenty-three, one twenty-four and one twenty-five?
Motion by Ms. Martinez, second by Ms. Costa, in favor say aye. Aye, I'll give a sign name. Motion passes with seven thirty-five and we go to executive session. Also, I'm sorry, before we go to exec, executive session, Mr. Ramirez, can, can I go back to item?
B, B one, or I can, because we already passed it. No? Alright, perfect.
I just wanted to let the people know about the, the ruling on U L, but that's fine. Seven thirty-five, we go to executive session.